Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order and I'm going to ask Ms. Daniels to do her call, please.
Superintendent, Dr. Janine Hines-Harris.
Here.
Board member Johnny Horn.
Here.
Board member David Case.
Here.
Board chair Carol Bradford.
Here.
Board member Bob Bluth.
Here.
Board member Jennifer Hartman.
She's on her way traveling from Montana.
Mr. Warren, would you do our invocation tonight?
Sure. Let's pray. Father, Lord, we love you and we thank you again for assuming here tonight with our staff and teachers and everyone involved. And Lord, tonight, we have a special request today as we're all excited and in the air about schools starting back order to form a hedge around every student, everyone involved with our agency throughout the state, every department. And tonight, Lord, as we meet and go through our gathering here tonight, I pray, Father, that you're happy to be on it. Give us infinite wisdom. Get honor and glory out of everything that's said and done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you stand for the pledge? Attention, believe. Pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ever changing.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who's John? Okay. All in favor? All right. Next is the superintendent's update for reopening school.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Cynthia with the record report. Ms. Hartman, is she okay? And thank you all for being here tonight and I appreciate this wonderful group of people that I get to work with every night being here tonight. And we're here, board members, because we want to share with you our plan for reopening. As of July 8th, 2020, as we have said all along, we have to be flexible and fluid because we're in a constantly changing environment. So even today, we've been looking forward to receiving more guidance from the Georgia Department of Education and that came today about lunchtime or so. I shared that with my team and we've all been anxiously awaiting that latest information. Additionally, the governor is meeting today with the superintendent's advisory group and so we're anxious to hear what's coming out of that important meeting related to reopening schools. So we're constantly getting new information and watching for that as we should. Now, there are two things I want to share with the board and with our guests at home, our parents and community members that are at home. The first of which is just a quick overview of the teacher survey. At the last meeting, I shared with you the parent survey and I thought the board would be interested in seeing the results from the survey that I sent out to the teachers. So very quickly, you know, we could spend a lot of time on all of these, I'm just going to go through it and then I'll be glad to answer questions on any of these questions you may have. So first of all, there were 150 teachers that responded to the survey and the first question, there's six questions, I believe, six or seven. How worried are you about the impact of coronavirus on you personally? And so it's a five-point survey here, scale, I guess, extreme worried, very worried, somewhat worried, not so worried, and not at all worried. So go to the next slide and you have the exact percentages. So as you can see, 47% of our teachers are not worried about the impact on them personally. So they're feeling pretty good. Next. How worried are you about the impact of the virus on reopening school? Next slide. 29% said that they were not worried. So that's 71% of our teachers are either somewhat worried, very worried, or extremely worried. So I think we all agree, from parents to community members to business owners, from the president to the governor to Dade County, we're all concerned, anxious, or worried about the impact of the coronavirus in our society and reopening school is a big part of that. How easy or difficult is it for you to work effectively these days? So it goes from very easy to very difficult. Next slide. Very easy, let's see, somewhat difficult or very difficult is 29%. So 71% of our teachers are really functioning well in these stressful times. They're managing, either they feel no different or they find it to be, you know, easy. Next slide. What are the top three biggest challenges you faced while working remotely? And their responses mirrored the parents' responses. Next slide. Number one, 47% of our teachers said their number one challenge was keeping a regular schedule. And I heard that from parents, you know, that it was very difficult for them with their students, you know, to keep that regular schedule. And then there was a tie for second place, 28.8% on both of these. Social isolation and communication with coworkers. Communication with coworkers is harder than social isolation. So those are the top three, those are the top two along with keeping a regular schedule. Actually, in second place, according to the percentages, is other. And we had 65 comments from our teachers. I read every single one of them. And one of the top concerns that they listed on there had to do with wearing a mask. And our parents talked a lot about wearing a mask. We had approximately 1,000 comments from our parents. Our parents had a lot of thoughts, a lot of concerns, a lot of things that they wanted to express in that survey and we were glad for them to share those thoughts with us. But wearing a mask was a concern for the teachers. And I actually did, you know what a Wordle is? A word cloud where you take all of the responses and you make a word chart out of it? And the number one word that popped up when our teachers, would you like to guess what that word is, anybody? Our teachers are so focused on the students. And so why are they talking about a mask? They were talking about the elementary teachers and I know that Ms. Hartman and Ms. Levin's probably heard this many times. They said that small children need to be able to see their expression. And when the children are learning phonics, they're learning to read, they need to see the teacher speak properly. And speech pathologists, Ms. Reyes was telling me, you know, the speech teachers were very concerned and they articulated that in the comment section on this particular survey, that when teachers wear a mask, you know, just like all this, you cannot see the person's expression and body language is so important. Ms. Beeler met remotely with each member of her team as a new principal and she said that she wanted to do the Google Hangout to have the face contact because of the body language. And she said, I didn't want to just talk on the phone, I wanted to see the body language and the expression. And the teachers said that the students, they wanted them to feel that love and concern and the positivity and to learn the proper way to speak and, you know, to help them with learning to read. The teachers also talked a lot about their concern about engaging the students and the parents. And the parents talked about that too. You know, the students getting off track and wanting to work late at night and, you know, just trying to have that regular schedule, which the teachers put that as their number one, you know, is keeping that regular schedule. And so those were some of the comments from the teachers. And the next one is how confident are you if you taught in the classroom and last year in your class as well? Because we entertained this ideal idea briefly. Next slide. If you look at percentage, this is not surprising to me at all. 67% approximately. So they are very confident doing that. And I think that that speaks to the expertise of our teachers. And I have so many commendations for our teachers, how they had the best attitude in our team. You know, when we started March the 13th, when we had our administrator's meeting, poor Ms. Beeler, she came on Wednesday. We had a meeting on Friday and that was her last day. It was her last day with students. She was here two days. And, you know, everyone embraced it and this is what educators do. They just embrace whatever the circumstance is and they say, okay, well, we'll do that. Okay. So, you know, Ms. Johnson had really pushed forward on, we need to get that digital learning in place. And so I agreed. We brought that to the board back in the fall. We actually were ahead of many of our colleagues in sister and brother sister systems in Georgia because of that proactivity. And so that helped us. But our teachers, not only did they continue teaching, they developed curriculum, they learned new software. They had a complete paradigm shift with the way they delivered instruction and they were up for it. So this statistic here does not surprise me at all. Our teachers, they're going to do whatever we ask them to do and they're going to do it with a great attitude. And I just want to thank them for their hard work and dedication to our students, which again, the word that they use more than any other word, 71% in their comments, is all focused on the students, not on their well-being, not on anything about their job or their work, the students. I think that's neat. That really touches my heart. How confident are you that you have the right resources from Dade County Schools to help support you through this period? Next slide. Extremely confident, very confident, and somewhat confident, 31, let's see, 71? 92% board members, 92% of our team members are just very confident that we've got the resources, we're able to help them through it. So I think that's a very good validation of our efforts and how we support our teachers through the years. Outside of work, how confident are you that you have the right support network to help you through this period? 94% of them said that they were confident that they had the right support network to help them get through this period. And I hope and pray that we all have, 94% of us have the right support. That's a very encouraging statistic, I think. And so that's just a quick glance at our teachers. And now I'll proudly present our plan to you, board members. And this is, I've had many questions from folks about our plan and, you know, again, it's a fluid process and this is where we are today and we're presenting it to the board to get your feedback. And we want, I used the example this morning that so many times, like in legislative sessions or whatever, that people will say, well, I'm over here, you know, I can't go over there. And I think we all need to look for what's here in the middle, that everybody around the table can like reach forward and put their hand on it and say, yeah, that's what I can do right there. I'm for that. And then we all get behind that and we embrace it and we make the best decisions that we can. So the first slide, and this is a very short presentation, I kept it extremely simple and we can drill deep on any of these. But getting there to our plan, I have a quote here from one of my favorite authors, M. Scott Peck. He wrote one of the bestselling books called The Road Less Traveled. I love that book. I've reread it several times and he's passed away, but he was a psychiatrist. And he talks about the best parents suffer through their decision-making. And so my message really to the parents that are watching is that I know how you suffer when you make a decision, you know? It would be easy when your child says, hey, I want to go to this party Friday night, for you to go, no, you're not going. Boom. That's the answer. No, you're not going. Or, okay, that's fine. But he says that the best parents suffer through their decision-making because they think about it, well, I'd rather my child didn't go, mm, but, well, is it going to be okay? Well, let's see, who's going to be at the party? How are you going to get there? What time is it over? Who's the chaperone? What's going to be happening at that party? You know, just lots and lots of questions. The best parents suffer through their decision-making. So what I want to say to parallel that thought from the great psychiatrist, M. Scott Peck, who said the best parents suffer through their decision-making, is that we have also suffered through our decision-making. Focusing on our sweet children, but, you know, to be completely transparent, we're focusing on the betterment of the United States of America because we feel, and I think this is validated every night on the news and everything we're reading, this country is counting on teachers and principals to help get this country restarted economically and in every way. People are concerned about the mental health of people who are not in their normal routine. And just last week, the American Pediatric Academy or Academy of American Pediatrics, anyway, the pediatricians in America stepped forward and they said children need to be in school. And that's what we've been saying since all of this started. We want our children to be in school. So, you know, we have a plan, but I want to say right up front, we want our children to be in school. So parents, you know, when you registered in the spring, if you did, if you didn't, with the survey, you know, we want your child to be in school. We're going to give you two options, but I just want to tell you. Sometimes people will say to me, well, what do you think I should do? And I usually say, I can't tell you what to do. You have to make your own decision. I'm telling you today, I think the best thing for children is to be in school. I'm saying it. And I'm saying also that we are in a landscape of litigation and darkness that I've never seen in my entire career, my entire life. And people everywhere are fearful about saying what others should do for fear of litigation because these are serious times. If you get the virus, you could die. And so we can't tell other people, you know, well, you need to do this or you need to do that. But the America's pediatricians have said that they think that's the best thing for children for a number of reasons. And if you just Google, in fact, we'll put a link on our website, but if you Google the pediatricians group, I'm sure you will be able to find that. And you can read the document and I have it on your board agenda there. It's a document. One of the many things that we attach to the agenda tonight. So two options that our team presents to you tonight, board members, to embrace and then once we do this tonight, then we will, we want to get the information from the governor's office that happened this afternoon. We want to digest all of the latest information that came today and then we'll be pushing out and publishing all of this, which by the way, is subject to change tomorrow. So we have to, you know, just continue to be flexible because that's what's going to be expected for all of us in school halls. So the first option is traditional school and the second option is virtual school. Now, I want to also tell you that in Dade County Schools, we spend a lot of time planning for the what-ifs. The what-ifs and our wonderful team has developed a plan for the what-ifs. What if we have to shut down and then we have to come back as a hybrid in order to get back in? Or what-if, what-if? We have planned all that. We have a plan for each one of those levels and just like we have an emergency plan, that's kind of an internal document, but it's a wonderful plan. And last year, we were, you know, learning as we went through a lot of the digital learning. And we asked parents, you know, about that digital learning, which I referenced that survey. And, you know, we took all of that information to help us with this virtual school option. Now, if you remember from the traditional school option, when we surveyed the parents, I sent out a survey, 87% of the parents said that they plan to send their child back to school. 87%. Now, it's interesting to note that over in Walker County, Catoos County, I talked to my colleagues over there and we are very close knit. We talk during weather, we talk on planning because just like King Solomon said, you know, as iron sharpens iron, so one man sharpens another. We lean on each other, we talk to each other to get ideas and to see what each person is doing. And it was interesting to note that they had 87 and 88% of their parents who said they were sending their children back to school. So that was just like Dade County. 87% of our parents said that they plan to send their children to school. Nationally, 85% of parents are saying they're sending their children back to school. So that's just kind of a little sidebar thing that you might find interesting. So let's talk about what traditional school will look like, okay? The principals have put together, and you're like, well, I can't read that. Well, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through all of this right now. I'm just going to say that our principals have worked very hard to come up with what traditional school looks like. Okay, so the number one thing that parents ask me and they're asking the principals or the board members, will my child have to wear a mask? And the answer to that today, July 8th, 2020, is no. But we are encouraging it and they're allowed to wear masks if they want to. And so we'll see what the governor says today, maybe that will check, we don't know. And but anyway, no, we're not requiring it, but we're all going to have to be flexible and have a good attitude about what is asked of us. For example, I'm going to talk about the buses in a minute. We are going to ask those who choose to ride the bus to wear a mask. Why? Because we cannot promise social distancing on a bus. That's unattainable. We cannot do that. It's not feasible and we're not going to pretend like we can make that happen. So 19% of our parents said that they do not plan on sending their child to ride on the bus. 19% of the parents who had children on the bus last year told us that they're not going to be riding the bus. So, you know, some of the things that are going to look a little different, you know, drop off and pickup, you know, will be a little bit different. The students will report directly to their classrooms and they're going to eat breakfast in the classrooms. Dr. Long has been working with the principals, working this out. Lunch will be served at half-capacity with students socially distancing tables. When you go in to a school, which we're not going to be having visitors at first, we're going to say, we're going to minimize what's going on in the schools, just the teachers and the staff and the students. But what we will see is that we will see some students eating lunch in the classroom, perhaps they're medically vulnerable, you know, and then we'll see more lunch scheduled times and we'll see fewer students in there at that time. So that's something that will be a little bit different. For elementary student, elementary teachers, previously, you know, the teachers had duty-free lunch and with the emergency that we're in, we're going to, I'm going to put a formal request in writing to have that waived. We cannot run multiple lunches and not have help with that. So we're going to have to ask the teachers in elementary to help us some with that. So anyway, and then water and recess. A lot of parents have said, well, will my child have recess? You know, and how will that work? We're asking parents to send a water bottle with their child and we've been installing, you know, the water bottle stations in all of our schools. We have a couple of places, we're getting those finished so that all of our schools are modern with the latest facility needs for the water. So students can have access to refill water bottles as needed. We will have recess, but we will not allow the students to bring toys from home to use during recess because of the cleaning. And so visitors will not be allowed at this time. And the principals will communicate with the parents about how they're going to drop off. I'm not going to take everybody's time to go through that. Students in the classrooms will be three to six feet apart when feasible. We cannot promise, parents, we cannot promise you that everywhere that your child goes, they're going to be six feet apart. So we're going to try to do that. Mr. Farnie went and measured the classroom and he's like, mm, no, can't do it, you know, unless the board can build a couple of more buildings and hire like 50% more teachers to have nine or 10 kids in a class, you know, which that's unreasonable. And so, you know, the latest recommendations from, I believe that was from CDC, wasn't it, about the three feet that we were talking about in our meeting yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah. So now they have conceded that that's just not feasible in school. And then for the younger children, you know, I'm thinking about my little nephew who's two, I mean, Thomas is not going to, he's going to be playing and having fun and, you know, the younger children, they're not going to understand that. So, you know, we're just going to have to say when feasible, you know, that's the way that's going to be for social distancing. Students will have individual supplies. Previously, teachers let the students share supplies on the school supply list and now students will have their own supplies. And something different that I think the parents will be excited and the students too about this is that we will assign technology to each student. Instead of them going into a room and using the computers that were out, we're going to be assigning a computer to, a laptop, Chromebook to each student so that they're not constantly having to clean that and, you know, deal with that. Ventilation will be maximized and inspected for increased air circulation. Like tonight, we have the windows open. When possible, we're going to have the windows and doors open to have outside air. Mr. Smith has done a great job going through and checking all of our HEAC and the board approved, I believe it was $22,000 just last month for some additional equipment to maximize ventilation at Dade Elementary School. So he's continuing to work on that. Dade Middle School's going to have a whole new system. The high school has a new system from a couple of years ago. And so anyway, we're going to be, you know, checking all that and we already have. So students will be encouraged to use hand sanitizer, hand soap, and paper towels during transitions. We're going to continue to educate, that's what we believe, that the way you change the world is through education. And so we'll be continuing to teach students about the importance of social distancing and washing their hands, you know, hand hygiene and how to cough and, you know, into their arm. And today, we were having a meeting and I coughed in my hand and I said, I recognize that I coughed incorrectly. And by the way, I'm not sick. You know, that's what we all say if we sneeze or cough and we go, we're not sick, you know? But we'll be teaching them that and emphasizing that. We will be... We will be minimizing student transitions. So at the elementary school, if the students previously rotated classes for some, um, courses, they're not going to be doing that anymore. We're going to try to keep students in a cohort most of the day and then let the teacher come over if there's a different teacher instead of the students going in the hallway. And we're going to, um, we're going to avoid student assemblies or large group gatherings. So we won't be having those and we won't be scheduling field trips right now. That doesn't mean we won't be able to later, but we're just going to simplify. And, um, temperatures will be taken daily. We order thermometers for every teacher and, um, students who've got a temperature above one hundred point four will not be allowed to enter the classroom and will be sent home. Or adults, any of us. If you go to a restaurant and they take your temperature, that's for all of us. We will isolate students who are sick from students who are well. And, um, then the next slide is what is high school and middle school going to look like? That was elementary. And so, um, same thing for breakfast, lunch, I already explained that. Breakfast in the classroom, lunch will be at half capacity. They can bring water bottles, we're encouraging that. Um, we're not going to have visitors for now, we're not going to be having assemblies, we're not going to, um, you know, we're going to try to avoid those large gatherings. And, um, that is the model for traditional school. And what we are committed to doing is, um, you know, monitoring the situation and, you know, we may have to send home a particular class for two weeks, but it's our goal to keep school open, to keep school open. Um, and we recognize that parents need to get back to work and, uh, we're going to do everything that we can, um, to have traditional school five days a week. And the first day of school is August the 7th and that's the same date that's on our calendar on the website. And by the way, just FYI, every school district in our RESA district, there's seventeen of us, everybody is adhering to their, um, calendar. No one is starting late. I just thought that was interesting. And there's one school district that's requiring masks at this point. So, um, but none of the ones will. So this is the traditional school and now I'll go over the virtual and then, um, I'd be delighted to entertain questions. The virtual school option is, um, we're very excited about this. Um, it, it was like an epiphany when all this came together because it's so, um, it's so beautiful, such a perfect plan, I think, um, for virtual learning. Our teachers are going to be thrilled to hear this plan because board members, our teachers will not have to create the curriculum, figure out what resource to use Zoom and, and all of these different things. We are looking at different, um, um, management, course management software programs and we have found one that we think we want, but we are going to have a recommendation for you at the next board meeting on July the 20th. And, um, the one that we are courting has a number of features that we are infatuated with and we think the parents will embrace and be excited about. And it does things like, um, it monitors how much time a student is on the internet. If the student is not in the classes, it sends an email to the parents and lets them know and the teacher. And it doesn't allow students to work after six until the morning or whatever time we set it up, after nine o'clock at night until 6:00 AM or something, whatever we set it up. It's very sophisticated software and we think that it's going to be, um, a wonderful supplement to our, um, educational plan for this next year. And so this is going to be the Dade Virtual School option. And again, we'll be, um, presenting to you the actual software package on the 20th for your consideration. And so here's the way this is going to work. I'm obviously not going to read all this. All of these things are in documents that we will, um, publish on the website and, um, the parents will need to register. We did the quick surveys to get a feel for each school, how many students were going to be, um, physically attending school and how many wanted the online option. And, um, now you will actually have to enroll to be included in this, um, virtual school. And Patty Johnson, um, Patty, will you stand up and just turn so that everybody at home can see who you are? Ms. Johnson is going to be the director of the, or the principal of the virtual school. The principal of the school is still going to be over that student, monitor the work. But Ms. Johnson is going to, um, coordinate all of that and work with the principals. And she's well equipped for that. She, um, has been a high school principal and, uh, very successful, um, principal and she'll do, um, a great job with that. And the way that this is going to work, um, if your child, um, wants to be in the virtual school, once you decide, we have a five-day grace period. Once school starts on August the 7th, you have five days to decide if you like it or not. And if you say, oh, this is not for us, then you can enroll in traditional school. Um, or if you start off in the traditional school and something changes at home and parents, you want your child to be in the virtual school, you can go during that five-day, um, window. And for elementary children, we're going to require, once you choose, you've got to stay in there for nine weeks because we can't have people coming and going and creating chaos. We have to commit what we're going to do for that nine weeks for elementary. Now, if you're in secondary, you have to commit to the semester. And then if you don't like it and you want to change, you can change the next semester. So, um, that's the way we're going to set that up. Now, the question is, people say, well, can my child be in athletics or band or whatever if my child is in the virtual school? And we say yes. And that, by the way, is consistent with our surrounding districts.
How would that work if, if social distancing is having an issue that you wouldn't come to school? Is it okay to be around the band members, whoever? I'm just asking.
Well, we have that question too, but we feel like that's a family decision and so, you know. Um, and, you know, we're getting our guidance from the Georgia High School Athletic Association and so, um, we're just, we just decided as a team that, um, we don't want to get involved in that. We feel like the parents need to guide that.
Sure.
With the, uh, virtual school, will that affect the head count numbers for classification?
Um, we don't think so, no. And also it won't affect our numbers for like, um, FTE or, we can double check on that.
They still count.
Uh-huh. Yeah, because they're still enrolled in our school district.
So they're enrolled and have a schedule.
Mm-hmm. They have a schedule.
Okay.
But we can double check on that. That's a, that's a very good question. Next slide. Um, buses, you know, I briefly mentioned that and Brother John's working on, you know, a wonderful plan and he arranged today, we've had even more training with our, um, vendor about our, you know, more from the CDC on cleaning classrooms and buildings. And we bought state-of-the-art equipment, um, to clean our buildings. But, um, you know, you can clean your building and then as soon as someone walks in, if they have the virus, then it's, you've got in the room. So, I mean, you would have to constantly be cleaning every room, you know, it, it's like, it's going to be a challenge for us, but we are, um, proactively, you know, getting the equipment that's needed to, um, miss the rooms and clean according to the guidelines by CDC. So the buses, you know, what's going to be different? Well, we're going to say that masks or face shields are mandatory if you choose to ride the bus. You know, riding the bus is a privilege, it's not a requirement. And so we cannot social distance, so we're going to have to protect each other and wear a mask. Uh, students will be given an assigned seat and they'll be required to sit in that seat. And of course, uh, Mr. Smith's going to put family members together and try to separate them on the bus, you know, from other students. So, um, at any rate, um, it will be a little bit different, but basically the mask on the bus is the biggest thing and then they'll have assigned seats.
Only thing that I would say is, I'm always amazed about the number of students that get dropped off at schools that don't ride the bus. I mean, we haven't.
Yes.
And I could see the numbers increasing now. So I'm just thinking out loud and know the principals are already over this, but, you know, we might have to open up our schools a little bit earlier because that line
Yes.
goes around forever and, you know.
Well, we're going to. Yes, sir. And we even put on here, um, expect delays and we're probably going to stagger the opening. Uh, we haven't even gotten to that yet. And, um, it's real funny, I was talking to one of my superintendent colleagues last night and about something instructional and the comments, well, we're not even there yet. I mean, you know, this is just, um, so it's like an onion. It's just layers and layers and layers. And so right now, our goal is to plan the framework to get everybody back at school. And that is a wonderful, um, observation and that will be something, um, that we will be planning next will be our, you know, opening and closing times. And then we'll be sending out information about open house, which we're planning on having open house, but it'll be different. We won't have everybody there at the same time. We're going to schedule it during the day in small groups. Next slide, we're almost at the end. Frequently asked questions. Dr. Harris, do we have to wear a mask? Does my child have to wear a mask? No. If they ride a bus, yes, they will have to ride, uh, wear a mask to ride on the bus. And we are recommending that they wear a mask. And if we have a teacher who is medically vulnerable and she says, boys and girls, we're going to wear a mask in here, then we're going to wear a mask in there. I mean, it's just going to be situational and we all need to have a good, um, attitude and just do whatever we need to do, um, to keep each other healthy. So, uh, no mask are not required across the board today, July 8th. Buses, we will run our buses, but we cannot promise that we will have social distancing. And we cannot promise that we will have social distancing in every situation in schools either. We're going to try. We're going to shoot for three to six feet. And then when is school starting? Are we delaying? No, no. We're starting August 7th and the calendar is on the website, it's under the section for parents and students. So you can check that out. Last slide. So in conclusion, um, King Solomon said plans fail for lack of counsel. So what you can count on from Dade County Schools is that we will continue to work with the governor's office, Superintendent Woods and the Georgia Department of Education, the Department of Public Health, the Center for Disease Control, our local health officials and others that we deem appropriate, professional organizations as we, um, go through this storm together. And, um, to, in conclusion, what is our plan? Let me state it again for everybody at home in case you're tuning in at the end. We have two options for our students, traditional school or Dade Virtual School. Um, and if you are, you went to school last year, then you're in, we're expecting you, we cannot wait to see you on August the 7th. If you want to be in the Dade Virtual School, you're going to need to go online and register and we will send you a text message with that link. So you don't have to be searching around for it, we're going to put it on the website and, um, we will have that and we will text you and let you know. And our primary means of communication is our website. So just check our website, you can call any of us, uh, email us, we will, um, be glad to answer your question. And the last thing is, you can count on that. We continue to work on contingency plans for what if. And just the other day, we had a meeting with Alex Case, who's our mayor for City of Trenton and our EMA director. And he said, they, he's, uh, getting a, a grant through the CARES Act and he was talking to us about what we needed. We have a wonderful team in Dade County and we'll be working together collaboratively to meet the needs of our students and in this case, to meet the needs of the citizens of the United States of America as we all unite to get America back on its feet through normalcy, going to work, you know, getting kids in school and working together as a team. And Dade County's really good at that in, uh, trying times. I've been here four and a half years and I've noticed every time somebody has a need, boy, this community really rallies. And I'm going to tell you, I, I don't think I had, I got two emails, I think, about the survey, just really with questions. Our parents have been great about being flexible and supportive and I just want to thank our parents for that. And, um, we're here and now we will be glad to entertain questions and you may have a question for me or one of the principals or whatever. We're here to answer your questions.
I think it was covered pretty well.
So are y'all good with that picture? Are we missing anything that y'all wish we would cover?
Uh, just a logistics hat. I ride the school bus, who's going to give me a mask and who's responsible and am I supposed to keep a hold of that thing? Cause I can just see that becoming a major deal every day. Well, little Bobby, where's your mask? Well, I love you.
Well, we'll handle that like any other thing in school. Like, um, I would expect that the bus driver would have a box with extra and if that continues that, the principal or the bus driver would contact the parent and, and all. And, you know, um, we expect children to bring, um, certain things to school. Like we were talking today, you know, I said, well, you know, we expect all children to wear shoes to school. I mean, you know, it's like, right now, this is kind of where we are and they probably need to have, you know, an extra, um, you know, mask or whatever that they. Little comic relief, Brother John.
How in the world? And we usually speak pretty highly about that, you know? You know, well, that's just shame.
Any other questions?
Disappointments about not allowing students to have phones in classroom.
Yes, yes.
So one thing, um, that you, you didn't stay on a long time. I know with elementary school and the middle school students, um, we're wanting to limit the class changes as best as possible. The high school, it's going to be a whole lot more difficult simply because you've got freshmen that are overachievers that might be in an AP class with seniors. It, so are we going to, so the high school's almost going to look normal.
Right. And Mr. Farnie can speak to that, but, um, what I would say to that is you've got to look at their developmental stage.
Sure.
And the little children are not going to understand as much about, although, you know, I'm thinking about my little nieces and nephews and they understand, don't hug granny and, you know, things like that. But, um, the older children, you know, once we tell them, they're going to, um, they're going to understand and be in more of a leadership role, I would anticipate than a second grader, you know. But Mr. Farnie, do you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, we've already started talking about like traffic patterns and, you know, kind of like on a highway, you know, using the right side of the hallway and arrows and that kind of thing, um, lining up in the cafeteria and stuff. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a long realist of things right now, but we are, we are definitely going to have a plan for, um, whether it's staggered releases or things like that that we can use to, to kind of, kind of limit that. It's, it is a big question. We, we may end up having to, based on the traffic patterns, we may have to say, whether it's to pull your shirt up over your nose or something like that, just while you're in the hallway to, to have some kind of covering. But we're going to do our best to, to make it as flexible as possible.
You know, something you mentioned that I think needs emphasis is, um, cause I'm not a fan of wearing a mask all the time, obviously. Uh, I do think this virus sometimes can run its course. However, I have friends and family that have cancer. However, I have friends and family that have cancer. And one thing you said, if a teacher says, especially, I've got some teachers that are dealing with cancer that are still going to be in the classroom. And when a te, the parents need to understand, when a teacher says it's required, it's required. I don't care how you feel about it, plain and simple. It is a very safe, major issue for those particular teachers.
Right.
There's going to be some classes, just to kind of, piggyback on that. There's going to be some classes where like, if you're in a shop class or something like that, and you've got to pair up with somebody.
Sure.
You've got to be inside that even three-foot space sometimes because you're sharing equipment.
Mask might be required.
It's just going to be part of the PPE, just like protective goggles or anything else.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll do our best, um, but obviously with high school students, they're a little more volatile as far as keeping the mask in the backpack or something like that. And if something happens, they need to whip it out, or, you know, and, and we'll have so many on, on standby that, it, it's not going to be a discipline thing because nobody's going to be punished for not having it. We're just going to say, here, you know, here it is. You know, if, if we decide they need them in the hallways, we're going to make sure that they've got access to them. It's, it's not going to be, uh, you know, something where, "Gotcha, you're going to ISS." That's not what's going to happen.
Right.
Make as many people as safe.
But we do have to be considerate.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Well, so it sounds like y'all are good with this, and, um, after we hear from the, um, meeting with the governor today, and we all have an opportunity to read through all of that, we, goodness, how many pages? That was huge. Um, the guidance that we got today focused on different areas, and so each area had 20 or 30 pages. So it's a good thing that we're all copious readers, uh, you know, because we've read a lot, and I'm, I'm sure y'all have, and we continue to do that. And, uh, so we'll all digest that information, and then we will, um, push out these, um, other documents on the website. It may be Monday, uh, next week, just so we can make sure we've got everything aligned with what, um, the guidance from the experts have shared with us. And so we'll move forward, and, um, parents just watch on the website, but we will text you, let you know when to register and anything. All right. Settle? Yes, ma'am. Okay. Um, we finished with that. The next thing on our agenda is executive session for personnel. So do I hear a motion for executive session?
Make a motion, we go to executive session.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that's everyone.